Then tis not Tampa, Florida. I want to say huru. Huru means freedom in Swahili. And for the last 825 years, we African people haven't been free. That's 52 generations of no freedom. You never hear African talk about Fort Morse. Never. Because we don't know about it. We're not woke. But the fact of the matter is, approximately two weeks ago, I was rudely drugged out, forced out of this city council chambers by the Ku Klux Klan and the Grand Wizard, who turned the cameras off, who turned the city cameras off while us being drugged out to the city council, rudely arrested, charged with some fake crimes, some fake crimes. Because of what? Being black. Nothing more, nothing less. You understand? White people can do that if it's the white police officer, white person walking down the street, white person want to confront you. Because white people have what's called qualified immunity. That's what the ruling class gives them to do what they want to do to African people and get away with it. The white city council chairman ruled me something, caused me to be rudely arrested, disrupted, disrupt my life and put fake charges on me. But guess what? I've been arrested 85 times in my life. Have never committed one single crime in my entire life. Live a good, clean life. Don't drink, don't smoke, don't participate in homosexuality, don't have sex with little children. Don't do none of that. Never. Always been clean. Always had a good heart, a good brain and a good mind. And always known to resist white power and white tyranny. And you know what? When I say you see African people are scared of white folks. African people are scared of white folks. A bunch of Negroes sat right here in this room. A bunch of Negroes sat right here in this room and watched them drag a black man out for wearing a shirt. A bunch of police officers stood right against that wall, law enforcement officers, and watched them drag a black man for wearing a shirt. The police officer right here participated in it. How do you go home to your family after doing something like that? And put fake charges, a bunch of lies on it about an individual who come here on a weekly basis. It don't faze me. I'm a black revolutionary. And I'll continue to be a black revolutionary until the day I die. So there's city council, white people, the Ku Klux Klan or whosoever. I ain't feeling it. They don't scare me. They don't do nothing for me. When I go to bed at night, the hour and 45 minutes I sleep in a 24-hour period, I'm 100% happy. 70 years of age and 100% happy.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, next please.
Good morning, city council. Uh, so I'm here today in regards to item number nine.
And if I may, sir, I'm sorry, did you say your name?
My name is Jason Rickman. I'm a, I'm a local rehabber and developer here in the city of Tampa. Yeah. Um, so I heard the prayer before proceedings started about wanting what's best for Tampa and wishing well on Tampa and stuff like that. Um, my concern is about the limiting of commercial grants to half a million dollars. Um, the reason why I'm concerned about that is because currently, um, well, East Tampa needs density. That's simple and plain. Um, you go everywhere throughout the city and you have multifamily. Um, you also have some affordable housing, but East Tampa doesn't have any of that. And I put forth a project where it's going to be majority 30% units, uh, mixed use with a grocery store, which East Tampa desperately needs. And item nine would stifle that. So I just, I just want, I feel like East Tampa really needs a chance. And I would like you guys to not vote on limiting grants in that area. That is all. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I like your hat. Next please.
Good morning, Keela McCaskill. What does it take for you to listen to the voices of people that look like me? To the marginalized, to the seniors that own key parcels of dirt in East Tampa? And not only listen, but to respond as if you heard what we're saying. These people have paid taxes from 20 to 50 years plus. And anytime we put a project forward, particularly putting projects forth to help individuals like these taxpayers, we're put, it's at a halt. But we sat back and watched all of you have big energy for a white wealthy male to receive $5 million to build 20 units, and I support it. But this limitation on number nine will prohibit my client, who's paid taxes 25 years versus his two. Ms. Jackson, 50 years of paying taxes. The Jeffersons, 20-plus years of paying taxes and servicing the homeless population. People, most of us wouldn't even want to be around. These grant limitations that were put together by an exper, the most experienced team you've ever had in the city of Tampa. Nicole Travis, Elise Drumgo puts it together. And here we are today reviewing scratch throughs and limitations from an inexperienced staff. And I mean exactly what I said. Inexperienced. Inexperienced staff, part-time attorney. And you going in one setting approve some limitations. You didn't see the before and I'm, the grants that the staff that was experienced proposed, and I'm sure you didn't read all those documents before you gonna rule on the decision today. I watched the EDC come here and they only had that property for a year and a half, maybe two. They have not vested in this community. They don't buy a piece of gum in East Tampa. And you skipped through $9 million. It should have been an outcry. Should have been an outcry for them to receive $9 million from the poorest people in this district. And all they gonna get is 100 and something units. And USF is gonna benefit from it because they want to apply for a grant. And you all skipped through this and said yes. It's despicable. And I like most of you up here. But it is despicable. What will it take? Do we have to scream? Do we have to put a white face in front of it? What does it take? Number nine approving it today would be disrespectful. It feels very disrespectful. You want to know why people don't want to vote? Because they pay taxes, they come down here, do their civic engagement and get absolutely nothing. Today, I'm saying, don't say yes. Period. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next please. And if I may, ma'am, before you begin, Reverend, whenever you want to go, just raise your hand and we'll have you.
Good morning, I'm Tara Bluma. And I want to talk about debt today and how alarmed I am at the amount of debt that the city is taking on. Um, I'm a mom of two small children and every new dollar that we spend without a clear way to pay for it is nothing more than a bill that we're handing to our children. And I find that completely unacceptable. Too often, the administration tells you the merits of a project and gets you to agree on the merits without telling you how you're going to pay for it. And then we're left holding the bag and we don't have the money. Or we hear some other entity will pay a large percentage of it or the feds will pay for 20% of it. But as you know, the project costs continue to balloon and that percentage that they're kicking in gets smaller and smaller as the projects get more expensive. And it's not a good deal. If someone says to me, "I'll pay for half of a Ferrari for you if you pay for the other half of the Ferrari." Well, I still can't afford half of the Ferrari. So stop pretending that we can. And finally, we can't presume that our children are going to share the same spending priorities or priorities for our city that we have. And it's not their job to fund our wish list. It is our job right now to protect their financial future. And on that note, I really urge you to reconsider the South Howard Flood Relief Project. If we are going to put something on the credit card, let's get the most bank for our buck for the most amount of people and do the best good that we can. And that project is not going to help very many people in South Tampa. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you. I'm Ms. Bullock, go ahead, ma'am.
Good morning, Valerie Bullock. I'm here to talk about, um, item number nine and I'm also here to talk about legacy homeowners in East Tampa for the CRA program. This been going on for a long time and it's not gonna be cleared up overnight. But it's just different standards. When the business owners come in, we give them loans. Don't ask that many questions. And they have it for like 10 years, 20 years. But when the homeowner want their house remodeled, they want my kidney. If you get $100,000, it's a 30-year lien. And then if you get $50,000, it's a 15-year lien. For me, that is disrespect. The legacy homeowners who've been in the neighborhood 20, 30 and 40 years, they already have equity in the neighborhood. So they shouldn't have a lien on their house like that. Maybe five years the max. All I'm saying is we need consistency. Don't make it easy for the business people on the backs of the homeowners who've been in East Tampa ever since East Tampa was started. And on number nine, it seems like we wasn't, we wasn't wise with our spending. We'll just let them come in and get millions and millions and millions. And now in the middle of the game, because we gave away so much money, we want to change the rules now. But people have business and they had their plans already in the pipeline. So what rules are they going under? The old Newman rules are number nine rules. I just don't think it need to be changed. What we need to look at is why do we keep giving the money to the same people over and over and over again? It's just like with East Tampa CRA. You can see three top names that keep getting the money over, over, over again. Let's do it like the city by Behere. We'll go to Ford one year, Chevy one year and then Ram in next year. Don't let certain organizations keep coming repeatedly getting the bulk of the money. Let's spread the wealth. Just like the man said, he got a project going on. But now y'all want to change the rules. We should have had consistency all, all along. This Tuesday, I was at East Tampa CRA meeting and the lady Cindy from, um, Grant Park, I really like her idea. And I talked to her a couple of times. She wanted 1.2 million. Guess what they say? No, let's give her 2.4. So it's things like that that got us where we are at at this point. Number nine, y'all should not change that. Just be more careful that you not get giving it to the same people over and over again. Let's spread the wealth.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you. Uh, next please.
Good morning, Mimi Martinez. I am a current East Tampa CAC committee member. Um, agenda item number five. So I live in Ebor Heights, so Burrell Park is in my neighborhood. So is Reagan Park. And you can see the difference between those two parks. Um, I want to give a shout out to Janelle McGregor because she and the late Gwendolyn Henderson, they really took the lead on finally getting that park the recognition it needs to be redeveloped. Um, Janelle did reach out to me about a month or two ago to let me know that the next community outreach meeting is going to be in the fall. We had our first one in February. Um, Tony Mulkey has left us. So now we are scrambling to get Parks and Rec up to speed. Um, some people didn't even know that Burrell Park was going to be a project that we are working on redeveloping. Um, so it is a very complicated situation because the Nebraska Avenue quarter has so many multifaceted issues that is making it very hard to untangle now. And the reality is that it's been like that for decades. Um, and getting Burrell Park redeveloped is going to take two phases, in my opinion. First, you have to stabilize it and then you can work on redeveloping it. Stabilization is going to mean, what are we going to do with services that are available for those that are lost and broken? Because that park has become a hub for those people. The city of Tampa has turned a blind eye and they've actually funneled people to go there, nonprofit organizations to provide free goods and food there to them. Because they know people congregate there. The people are not going to leave because they know they can get free food and goods on a routine basis. I have asked the city, Parks and Rec, why can't we not put a sign up there at the park that redirects them to Tampa Hope? To Metropolitan Ministries, to Step in Stones, to the Lighthouse, to the Spring? Because those sources are going to go to people who are in need as well. Why can't we tell the people who are there, hey, this is where you can go? I never see mobile outreach at Burrell Park. Are we talking to the people who go to the park and see what they need? And why do they keep coming to that park? There is a drug house that's right around the corner on 26th and Nebraska Avenue. And there's created women. I met with Lauraleen. She is a, she's an angel because she's there to help those women who are sex trafficked. And when she finds clients who are serious about changing their life, she removes them immediately to another county. I met her, me and Bobby met her. There, my point is, we have cluster sexual predators who are on there. We have a head start that the county is building that is beautiful. And that playground abuts right up next to the Jayhawk Motel, which is a sex motel. And their bird's eye view is Burrell Park. How is that a head start for those kids? What are they seeing? Blight and slum. This is going to take all departments to come together. I really advocate that we need to have mobile outreach out there to talk to those people and to provide services. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you. Um, beforehand, Ms. Rodriguez is not well done, correct? Okay, great. And Reverend, do you wish to go next or? Okay, there you go. You may, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much. Thank you very much. But, uh, my name is Pastor William. Located at 1112 East Scott Street. Used to be. But y'all, uh, they let the white folks take everything away from black folks. And you know, I see this sign that say, City League of Staff. I wonder what they doing? They don't do nothing for Frank Williams. And they don't do nothing for people of color. But take, take, take. Basically what I wanted to talk about. Jackson House. You got to let God tear it down before y'all do anything about it. And this damn thing been sitting up there.
If just, whenever you speak, if you could speak to us, sir, if you don't mind.
Well, I gotta speak to the people because they the one that listen to me.
I hear you.
Y'all don't listen to me at all. And I thank God for them. I pray for y'all. You know why y'all don't call me up to pray? I'll tell you why. One of these people I know, they know I'm a pastor. But the reason they want me to pray because I used the name Jesus Christ, my Lord and Savior. But a guy came up in one day and read the Quran. He read almost a whole book of Quran. And that's when they start giving attention, give comment. And we don't give, we don't give our own comments. We want to get what y'all put on the flyer. And that's all. We got to talk about certain things. No, that ain't the way y'all gonna control Pastor William. I'm gonna talk what I need to talk about. I'm gonna talk about the truth. And that's what life is all about. You know, I used to come up here many years ago. And some of y'all, you thought, maybe not y'all. People would walk out when I stood up here. But now they not able to walk out no more because they all dead, I guess. But we have to understand. Treat people like people. And, and I rejoice over that. And don't treat people like they're animals. Treat them like they're human beings. And that's what life is all about. And you know what? We gonna have to give God the glory. And everything that happened to us, because God is a good God. And I got to give him the praise. Like I tell y'all, I'd rather talk to y'all because I think y'all to get something done for me. But y'all are standing up there, y'all don't get nothing done for me. I've been coming here complaining year after year after year. But they don't do nothing. But they call the white folks up here, come here, come here. We got to vote on it. But Frank Williams, they don't vote on nothing I say. And I'm the City League of Staff, don't want to do nothing I want them to do. And they coming over there telling me, I had to pay my son pay $18,000 for me to stay where I've been living out all the while. You think somebody gonna do something for? They got a, uh...
Thank you, Pastor. Your time is up unfortunately, sir. We appreciate you.
They got an organization called, uh, uh, King's Family. I can't think of the name because that took too much on my mind.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next, go ahead, sir.
Thank God for y'all. I'm just going to talk. Don't talk about what you're gonna live.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Bobby Creighton. Um, I also live in, in Ebor Heights and, um, came to speak on Burrell Park this morning. I don't think I can really add anything that wasn't said, uh, earlier by Mimi. I think she hit the nail on the head. Um, I'd like to give a shout out to the Tampa Monitor, Michael Bishop. He does fabulous work. He provides a very, very valuable insight into what's happening in the city and at city council. Um, if people don't know about what he does, tampamonitor.com/donate. Um, he's doing really great work. And I think he was exactly right in the commentary in his article. I mean, the item on the agenda was, you know, do we tear down the structure or not? From what I see, it doesn't really make a difference. You tear it down, you leave it there. People are going to congregate at that park no matter what. That's just where they go. Because they have nowhere else to go. And I think that's a shame. There was an item a couple of weeks back about, you know, adding, you know, giving more funding to, uh, to Tampa Hope and more beds. Where are we at with that? Are they full? What's the status? At the Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Initiative that allocates funding to different organizations, what are they doing? Can we understand what this problem looks like? Can we get some numbers? Can we get some figures? I never really see them come to council to give any updates. When we think about the history of this park, back in the very beginning, for the 1970s, when the city bought this park, they threw a bunch of money at it. They couldn't even get the ball rolling on this park. That structure was never even done. There's no tables there, there's no chairs. People sit on the floor, on the concrete, but they're back against one of the pillars where people throw cigarette butts and spit on the ground. That's not fair to anybody. So I don't, however way you slice it, it's not a good situation for anybody. For the people who live around the park, for the people that have to go to that park because they have nowhere else to go. So I don't really know what you do. This is a mess of an issue. And it's because the city, for generations, literally for 60, 70 years, have neglected to do anything with this park. It's just been sitting there like basically an open field with a playground in the corner that nobody goes to because there's somebody sleeping under the slide. There was a, a survey, um, for the park. And we had a meeting back in February to go over some updates, to have a conversation with the community about improvements, start that engagement process. So we should, I mean, six months later, like, we should kind of already know what we want to do with that, I would imagine. I know the park staff is really busy and have limited time and budget. But the fact that we're having this conversation right now, it's just adding to that terrible legacy of neglect and disregard for this neighborhood. Um, I, I appreciate, um, council member, or board member, Hertex, um, picking up the, the rope now that Councilwoman Henderson is gone because she was the one really pushing this, along with Tony Mulkey, who also happened to be gone. So I think right now the residents feel like we're in limbo. We lost two key players in driving this forward. Um, so hopefully we can get back on track and get some good outcomes for everybody in this area.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. Okay, I see some other folks come in. If you're sitting down, um, and you're going to be speaking in public comment, can you raise your hand? Okay, so two folks. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Good morning. Excuse me. Good morning, city council. My name is Darryl Heitch. From last year's budget to this budget, the CRA funding is currently at, will be proposed at roughly about $60 million. The CRA was created, my timeline might be off, but in 1969 to settle slum and blight, slum and blight in the communities. In 2020, this council, plus or minus some persons, wrote resolution number 568. You fast forward from 1969 to 2020, where the city made an apology for the wrongs that they done against black citizens of the city of Tampa. You apologize for the wrong against housing, economic opportunity, fairness and the various injustices. And you even stated in that resolution that there were overt and covert things that were done to make sure, in so many words metaphorically speaking, that you kept your knees on the necks of African-American citizens in the city of Tampa. So now we move all the way over to your agenda item number nine. Whereas you looking at and you're saying, okay, the same people who we apologize for doing a wrong, we're now about to do this same thing over again with the lack or limited consideration to what may or may happen with these individuals. If I got a business in Ebor, if I got a business in East Tampa and I'm looking to grow my business and all of a sudden I find out that the game has been changed, the goalpost has been moved further down the road and now I can't open my business. I can't continue to do business the way I used to do business, which then leads us back to the problem of slum and blight. The very thing that, that, that the CRA, chapter 163, is supposed to cure, we're making it come back to pass. We use terms like, what was this term? Um, it was a, what is this? hold on, I'm, I want, you, you, this, this term is amazing because I was like, how do you even make this term up? Unintended consequences. What is unintended consequences? An unintended consequence was you intended to move on resolution number 568, but the consequences are Angela Chris sending me an email three weeks ago saying that we want to have a discussion on why we haven't met since June. That's an unintended consequence. So if we continue to have these unintended consequences, how do we know our businesses are going to succeed? How do we know what you're proposing is going to succeed? I'll tell you this. If you're paying me $203,000 a year, I wouldn't buck the system either. I would ride with whatever is told of me. Thank you very much.
Sure, we appreciate you. Uh, next man, go ahead.
Good morning, Connie Burton. 568 is real. It's not gonna go anywhere. And if you're planning on moving forward political, it will follow you. Um, legacy and redlining. The switching of words, but the consequences are still the same. Redlining, denying black people value for their property then and now with your item number nine will also be denying black people or others the ability to move forward. And I truly believe the reason why you're doing it is because coming through the door, it's going to be another, uh, developer that's going to get 100 pre-pro特性 again. What we see happening now in all of East Tampa is houses, houses that cost over $600,000. I don't know what your salaries say, but most people in our community cannot move in those communities. So all of the beautiful pictures that people are going to propose in their political portfolio or things they did as they was in administration, it didn't help us. And we are not going to let that drop. It is not helping us. We believe that the CAC made consideration that those in our community that could not get in the game, like you all always lifting up some of these areas that was economically depressed, that had a lot of blight. What they was able to do before you pass this proposal, this, uh, agenda item, they was able to come and get all the money. It ain't no money trees out here. How was they able to redevelop all of downtown if they didn't get tax, special taxing and special credit? How was they able to go through West Tampa and do all that they have done? Special consideration. And so what we are saying is that since none of you all represent the true interest of District 5, it's a vacant seat up there. Slow this train down. Let us have somebody up there that we can continue to dialogue with to say, this is the interest of the majority. And while you do not have people from Channel 5 never coming down to this podium and saying they... And while you do not have people from channel side, never coming down to this podium and saying they represent District Five, you know why? Because they know they financial bankers is gonna have the ability to do everything that they need to do. They don't have to come down here and say they are from the downtown housing community. You know why? Because even though they are part of District Five, they know in daylight, sunlight, or the golf course, they gonna get their issues taken care of. And what we're saying is that, in spite of, uh, the manager of East Tampa being black, he do not speak for the whole sum of us. No, we need our representative there to speak in our interest.
We appreciate you.
I know we don't.
Thank you. Uh, next please.
Good morning, Allison Hewitt, third generation East Tampa resident and business owner. Item number nine would eventually say, East Tampa for sale. It is significantly challenging that we started working on these grants in two thousand eighteen. Two thousand eighteen, we proposed to you the pre-development program. The city council approved it. Then Nicole Travis and her team took it back to be able to make sure they created a process for city government. Here we are, twenty twenty-five. And we, it hardens our heart that we're asking you to slow down, even though it's been seven years. It takes seven years to get a program that's gonna help the community. One, the new proposal, if you are concerned because they say the interior grants need to make sure we're not getting the attention of Tallahassee, so we need to only do it to address code enforcement issues. Well, if you want to not to get Tallahassee's interest, then don't have, we have to limit all development to a million dollars. Anything over a million dollars are city initiated? Okay, we, the city and the CRA has owned property for the last ten, ten years. It has weeds growing on it now. Now they may mow the lawn, but the building has weeds. I've talked to Chief Bennett and said, okay, then code enforcement needs to stop citing our businesses. If the city owned businesses, you cannot maintain. Understand, there's money in the budget to be able to do that, but we don't even clean the buildings that the city owns. To be able to not attract the attention, to be able to say now in East Tampa, as now we're having the grants roll out, small businesses, you've gotta have a hundred percent of your money to be able to get fifty percent back. Again, East Tampa for sale, because who's, who can? But the someone who comes out with the money and says, hey, I'm gonna invest, cause I'm gonna get fifty percent of my money back. But you have businesses here who are struggling to make sure that they're able to feed their employees. And so if we had the money, if you had the hundred thousand dollars or the five hundred thousand dollars, why would they go through the headache of working with the city to get half the money back? So what you are doing is putting in places, the, the tying the arms. And like I said, East Tampa is now for sale, because if you have money and you can invest, we'll give you some incentives and we'll give you your money back. But the people who have been there and invested and taking care of their families, they can't get a shot at the table. I mean, the way that they have changed the legacy credit to reduce it to almost zero, if you've been there less than five years, do you understand if they have existed for five years, what a tremendous amount of work that takes? And I am sorry that I, we have to ask you to defer this. Because yet again, here we are, adding years to another process to get stuff done. And then District Five is bigger than East Tampa, but these grants right here were energizing development for local developers, for property owners to develop their property. We cannot take away that and accelerate gentrification in East Tampa. Please defer, not under nine.
Thank you, we appreciate you, okay? Next speaker, and is Ms. Rodriguez online yet? Okay, she may not make it, okay. Go ahead ma'am.
Um, good morning, Dr. Angela Scott, Vice Chair of the Jackson Foundation. Um, wanna come up here and say, thank you for voting yes on number ten. Um, whether you have done it or not at this time, but we wanna say thank you. We know that it has been some time of negotiation with the easement. So we wanna thank the city mayor, we wanna thank her administration team, and we wanna thank you all, um, the city council members who have voted, um, to move forward with amendment four, for us to move forward with our project. The Jackson House Foundation Board of Directors have gone through the RFP process. We have selected the firm and asked, this is approved today, number ten, we can move forward with public announcement of who that firm is. We wanna make sure that you say yes today to number ten, so that we can notify that firm. So I wanna publicly say that we stand as the Jackson House Board with number ten to move forward with the easement, so that we can reserve and preserve the history, the black history with the Jackson Historic House downtown. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am, uh, next please.
Good morning, Council, Robin Lockett. Just quickly, with this type of outcry about item number nine, hopefully you guys, uh, uh, find your way to create a workshop so that, or have the community input to really take in consideration about this item. Um, yeah, it's needed, it's needed, in regards to a workshop or something of that nature. And I support, um, number ten. The Jackson House supports it, I support it, in approving, uh, this developer. Thank you.
Thank you, and happy belated birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Yes ma'am, God bless you. Next, go ahead ma'am. And, and before, Doctor, if I may, um, after this gentleman here, is there anybody else speaking for public comment? Mr. Robinson, anybody else? Yeah, I guess he also wants to speak, yes. Uh, go ahead ma'am. Okay, so we have three more speakers, go ahead ma'am.
Good morning, Dr. Carolyn Collins, Chair for the Jackson House Foundation. Uh, I think our vice chair has indicated where we are in the process. I just wanted to make sure that we were here, we were present, and that you know that we support the resolution, uh, that's listed at number ten, which would afford us the opportunity as indicated to move forward. With the breach, what is what we call it, with the failure that occurred in the east upper corner of the house, uh, we actually just submitting you a press release. I like to make sure that when we come before you, we leave you something. So that was a press release from the, um, not just a breach, but we decided to have it after we actually spoke with the three firms down at the house, having completed that full process. Thank you for, and I wanna say thank you to the mayor and administrative team for working with the Accardis and removing the Jackson House. I wanna say thank you to the city council for approving it a few Thursdays ago. And I'm gonna say thank you in hopes that you would approve this, uh, today, so that we can move forward. This will allow us, which we currently working with the city staff to do emergency repair. And it's emergency repair for safety. Uh, we do not wanna put a considerable amount of money in it, but we know that the contractors need to go in, so it was mandated that we do that. I saw comments from different, uh, individuals and particularly with council who was making comments about the house and wanting to do it. We've received a number of calls from a number of individuals who actually wanna support and what they want to contribute. And we are just pleased and happy that we have finally reached this point and we were removed out of the equation. So do we support what's in it? Whether we, uh, really are looking at what actually is in there, there's a piece in it that we've never said we wanted to do, but we know what we need to do in order to save the house. Let me close the Jackson House off now and, uh, make a comment about number nine. It would be less than human of me to stand here and hear comments about whatever is going on with number nine that I'm not aware of. But there have been too many public concerns that have been expressed about number nine and whatever is happening with it. Not sure what's the best process, but I know I can say, like I said, please support number ten. I would ask that you delay and not support number nine. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am, we appreciate you. Next sir, go ahead.
Yes, uh, I'm Chagret Dawson. Although I did really wanna give you all maximum pressure today because of present company and one of the doctors in my family, I forgot to, uh, mention the last time I was up here. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna tailor this again to be nice, but I wanted to give a little context to this picture and I guess it's, you can't get the full screen, but anyway. This picture was taken a year before I was born. So, uh, this is March of nineteen sixty-seven. Um, so the little girl in this picture will be around sixty years old, which is about the age of many of the people that I have listed on this, uh, this document. But anyway, look, it's been about a week since I sent every one of you all allegations of improper judicial, uh, medical doctor and attorney misconduct. I know a couple of you all are actually attorneys, so you have an obligation and a duty to respond to it. But I know that delusional and entitled and incompetent, uh, racist people hate unilateral black happiness and they definitely hate any kind of, uh, black pushback. And I know, every one of you all know exactly what I'm talking about. Because the law is like akin to a coloring book, you know, it has the outlines and you're supposed to color inside the lines. If you wanna do what you wanna do, you get you a sketchbook and just kinda go off, uh, as you wish. The people around here don't know how to color within the lines. And if you wanted to color outside the lines, hell, you could've done something other than be a public official. Cause every one of us took a note at some point in time. Some of us actually did it with the naive expectation that those around us who do the same thing would be at least adherent to that obligation. But not in this damn city at all. Uh, apologize, but anyway. I got, I'm feeling kinda like Job from the Bible, you know, I gotta, I went to the VA, uh, a couple Saturdays ago and they said, I got a Nabisco bump on my back, like he did Job, see? And that Nabisco bump is kinda like, well, it's actually a sebaceous cyst, kinda like I think a lot of y'all are just pasty and useless now. But I watched way too many high seeded Nabiscos steal from the people without you all being the fulcrum of justice that balances it that you're supposed to be. I, I hope I did, uh, a good job for the person who asked me to behave. And by the way, I'm not suicidal, I plan to see this thing through to the end and I wanna let everybody know that everybody needs to hold these kind of people accountable. We'll all be famous eventually and, and actually, what I sent you all had nothing to do with my current lawsuit and appeal in the federal court against the city of Tampa. So you all had a duty to, to respond. That being said, shout out to the greatest institution of higher learning in the city, the University of Thomas Jefferson High School, and even the class of fifty-nine.
Thank you sir, we appreciate you. Mr. Robinson, I believe is our last speaker for public comment.
I hate to do this, Joe Robinson. The phrase, "The sin by silence, when they should protest, makes cry cowards out of men", is a powerful statement about the importance of speaking out against injustice. While often attributed to Abraham Lincoln, it actually originates from a poem by Ella Willa Wilcox. The quote emphasizes that remaining silent in the face of wrongdoing is in itself a form of moral failure, suggesting that taking a stand is a necessary act of courage, and that's why I'm up here. Listen, I'm on the west side, I don't wanna gonna say nothing. The people that just spoke about number nine are absolutely correct. I got a problem with number nine, on the west side. Legacy status, don't get legacy status for commercials, you gotta be residential, you gotta be this, you know? Come on, this legacy thing, I'm a legacy, I'm not a legacy, I gotta be office space, I can't run a house, it's not a business, I'm sick of it. We're going backwards. The people are right, number nine, engine number nine need to be running off the track. Number nine is a problem for me. I've been owning property in this city in every location, Ebor City, West Tampa, Tampa Heights, Cal, Lake, uh, over in Jackson Heights, Balmwood Heights, the real names over there, not North Ebor. Okay? Now, I've been litigated with the city for decades and decades on code enforcement, how they put two people in federal prison, Steve Brake and Chuck Looney. Now you guys are going back to this? I'm sorry, my mama rolling over in her grave this morning, knowing that we're gonna be jacked around in West Tampa with the property that I worked hard for, out there cleaning up the right away for the city every other week. And I got a serious medical condition. Tired of it. Number nine is not right. It's not fair, and it's not equitable distribution of city taxpayer funds that are derived from a slum and blighted area. And I think that it probably will be litigated. Okay? By certain property owners, it's not fair. And I'm saying it because I don't wanna put up the headache, I done talked to Abby, I done talked to Cedric, I done talked to all of them. And I done heard the people speak. Number nine is a problem with this legacy thing. Some people get it, some people don't. If you're a commercial business, you can get a legacy status, if you're residential, you can't get it. But what the hell am I? I rent businesses, I rent property, that ain't, that ain't commercial use. I'm gonna leave it at that. It's wrong, you don't need to pass it today. If so, I may have to go back to being a radical person, since I don't wanna be. But I got some money now to fight the system.